All right, if everyone will stand please, and we'll ask Commissioner Gonzalez to say a prayer for us.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon, first of all, in gratitude, and in...words come slow today because what we've experienced in the last week, the last few weeks, Lord, it has been devastating to our country, it's been devastating to our families, it's been devastating to our community. Lord, we know that you are in control, you have a plan. Father, we ask for your wisdom, we ask for your guidance, and we ask that you get our country back on the track of your word. In Jesus' name we pray.
Commissioner Lanier, will you leave some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so, before we get started, we kind of have a short meeting, so I just wanted to welcome everybody that's here. And you know, I know a lot of our hearts are really heavy around our community and around our country. We've really sustained a lot of tragedies in the recent past. I just want to let firefighter Daniel Stevens' family know that we are thinking of them. It's my understanding his dad passed and his brother's still in ICU, so we want to continue to keep them in our thoughts and prayers, as well as the 28-year-old woman that was lost over the weekend also. And just appreciation for our first responders, because you know, when you respond to people you may or may not know, especially when you respond to somebody you know, it passes on to the rest of the family, the county family. So, that is...and then with what happened, the Charlie Kirk situation that happened, just continuing to keep her and her children and all the families in our prayers. The Ukrainian woman that was stabbed on the subway in North Carolina, the horrific shootings in Colorado, you know, this is the pain and the shock that really that loss can bind us together. And we can feel really inadequate, but it is our shared humanity, our compassion, our care for one another that we find strength. So, we cannot undo these tragedies, but we can honor those that are lost, choosing to live with greater kindness, greater respect, and greater commitment to one another. It's my thoughts that when we live in a time of such disagreement, we can quickly turn divisive. But let us remember this, it is possible and it is necessary to have a strong opinions, that I agree that we should, we can have strong opinions, and even deep disagreements without dehumanitizing one another. We can discuss ideas passionately, but still treat one another with dignity. That is how we build a community worth living in, and to me, that's truly an honor, and that's how we can honor those that have passed. So, I would just ask each of us to commit ourselves to being people of compassion, of civility, and of courage. May we carry the memory of those that are lost in our hearts, and may we turn our grief into resolve, to create a safer, more respectful, and more united future for all. And one thing that really brings me comfort is Psalms 23, it's in the Old Testament. And if you don't know that scripture, I would ask you just to look at it. It really brought me comfort. So, that's kind of what I wanted to share with anybody, and I appreciate your time. So, now we'll go ahead and we'll move into the regular meeting, and I need an approval of the agenda.
So, Madam Chair, just down there, no changes.
Okay, thank you. There are no changes, so drive a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda for today.
Okay. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So, I'll go ahead and go down to the consent agenda. First one is consideration of regular meeting minutes for August 19th, 2025. Number two, consideration of regular meeting minutes for September 2nd, 2025. Three, consideration of FY '26 budget adjustments, number two, resolution number 252623. Four, consideration of treasurer's check register for August 2025. And five, consideration of finance check register for August 2025. Twelve, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the five consent agenda items.
What do you see?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I thought that you left out number six, but I may be incorrect.
I see one through five.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, that's fine. I have a first motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So, now we'll move on to new business, consideration to order county assessor to impose 2025 property tax, and we have Ms. Martin, CFO. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm here to present hopefully some good news to you all with regards to the property tax rates. Before I get started, I'd like to thank all of the municipalities and the school districts for reviewing and returning their validation so quickly. I think I received it within the three-day time period that were allowed. So, next slide, please. There we go. So, the statutory authority requirements, there's a perception that the commission sets the property tax rates. However, that is not the case. The New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration sets the rates. The function of the commission is to issue a written order to the county assessor. The state statute indicates that the written order shall be issued within five days of receipt of the property tax rate setting order from DFA. However, DFA has extended the deadline via email indicating that the order must be sent, not later than September 19th. And so, the statute from the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration is 7-37-7A NMSA. And then, the county commission issues and delivers its own written order to the county assessor, which is 7-38-34 NMSA. Then, once the assessor receives that order, the assessor shall prepare and deliver the property tax schedule to the county treasurer by October 1st of each tax year, and that's 7-38-36A NMSA. And then, at that point, the county treasurer shall mail all tax bills no later than November 1st of each year, tax year, and that's 7-38-36B NMSA. And next slide. Components of property tax. Yield control reduces certain property tax rates from the tax rate as originally imposed to the rates actually applied against the reassessed property. No increase in revenue is allowed for any addition to values attributable to valuation maintenance or reappraisal programs. In short, rates are adjusted downward in the same proportion that reappraisals have increased total values. It is easier to see the yield control adjustments to the residential rates. However, there are instances when the yield control has lowered the mill rate for non-residential properties as well. In fact, we see a decrease in the non-residential mill rate for the 2025 tax rate. And I did go back, Mike Stark had asked me to go back to see when was the last time. So, back in 1997, it was at six mills. 1998, it went to eight mills. It didn't see an increase until 2005, whenever we increased it for the .5 mills for the water reserve. And then, from there, we did not see any changes until 2025, which we see a slight decrease. So...for the tax year 2025, the inflation rate is set at 1.91%. New taxable values related to new construction is $18,930,370. That resulted in a 1.5% growth in the residential tax base. And then, the new construction, first year property tax value is added to the tax base is not subject to yield control in the first year due to the cost of providing infrastructure and public services to the newly constructed area, which that feeds into the growth rate. And then, as I had just mentioned before, the residential mill rate for the county has decreased from 7.020 to 6.942, and the non-residential rate decreased from 8.5 down to 8.493. The next slide, you can see the net taxable values are remaining somewhat consistent. There is a 4% increase in residential value from 2024 to 2025, and oil and gas saw 6% decrease from 2024 net taxable values, which is why we view the oil and gas property tax to be, you know, it's so volatile, we don't really rely on it as a steady stream of income. The net taxable value for 10-year comparison, over the past 10 years, residential property taxes have gradually increased. As you can see, oil and gas production is volatile with a spike in 2023. For the 2025 property tax year, there is an anticipation that oil and gas production will decrease. Residential and non-residential values fluctuated a little, seeing an increase in 2025. Assessor Boyd and his deputy, and/or his deputy, Mr. Kuhn, can answer any questions or provide additional information if you have any questions regarding how about those. The net taxable values for residential and non-residential. The total residential net taxable value is $1,873,873,517. The total non-residential net taxable value is $1,724,187,870. The chart above represents how these values are spread out based on the taxing authorities. The next slide, oil and gas assessed values, production and equipment. Based on the 2025 tax year valuations, it is anticipated that there will be significant decline in the net taxable value. The total net taxable value for production is $471,436,845. The total net taxable value for equipment is $106,614,410. The comparison of tax rates by aggregate, due to the yield control, this graph reflects how the rates are fairly consistent, and there are not any large variations in the rates that will impact the citizens of San Juan County. Residential property tax rates decreased an average of .14%, and the non-residential property tax rates decreased an average of .17%. Continuing with the comparison of tax rates by entity, this slide compares the tax rates by entity. As you can see, Kirkland Schools or Central Consolidated increased due to the issuance of general obligation debt. All other entities have adjusted slightly due to the yield control formula. The estimated property tax payment, the three-year comparison. To provide an example, if an individual lives in Farmington and the assessed value of their home is $150,000, the decrease to their property tax bill will be $9.85 less than their 2024's tax bill. However, just keep in mind, if their value went up, then, yeah, so there's also that offset. And then, San Juan County fact sheet. As mentioned previously, the .5 of San Juan County's mill rate is used to fund the Water Reserve Fund. Per state statute, the county can impose up to 11.85 mills. The remaining authority available to the county is .85 mills, and the remaining authority for the water reserve is 2.5 mills. The estimated assessed taxable value for 2025 is $4,176,112,642. The remaining authority would bring in $13,989,977. The last time the county increased property taxes was back in 2005, which was for the Water Reserve Fund. The county's gross receipts taxes, a strong revenue stream, which helps the county remain the second lowest mill rate in 33 counties. The county has not had any general obligation debt in 34 years. So, that's something very proud to be proud of. The 2025 tax year comparison, the state constitution limits the rates that may be imposed without vote approval to a total of 20 mills. New Mexico statutes allocate the 20-mill limit as follows: 11.85 mills to counties, 7.65 mills to municipalities, and .5 mills to school districts. Of the 11.85 mills allotted to counties, San Juan County remains the second lowest out of 33 counties with a mill rate of 8.5. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. So, again, just reiterating what you said, that DFA sets the property tax rates?
That's correct.
And that, right now, with this, we're down with the non-residential mill rate of .007%, and then, down in the residential, .11%. So, we've seen a decrease.
In both sides, yes.
Yep. So, okay, go ahead. Any questions or comments about that?
That was a lot.
Yeah. And I like how you read that trillion-dollar one. That's pretty good.
My husband gave me a hint. He says, write it out, don't count the numbers, because other than that, I get all things twisted.
Well, you did a very good job. He was a wise man.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Can you go over that again?
Yeah.
Read that number again.
Gosh. So, all right. Well, if I don't have any questions or any further comments, then I'll need a motion.
I make the motion that we accept. I'll second.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Do we need to read that out?
Yes, if you could actually move to issue the order.
Okay. Real good. Get up there.
Okay.
Okay. In consideration of the order, the county assessor to impose the 2025 property tax rates, I'd like to make a motion to accept.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll move on to Michelle Tributillan, consideration and application for variance from San Juan County Cannabis Ordinance, number 120 for Cannabis Club LLC, 5641 Bloomfield Highway, Farmington. Welcome.
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, it's my statement I like to read. Madam Chair, Commissioners, when this is really for the public, when the commission considers an application for variance from our cannabis regulation ordinance, I'd like to remind the public of the process the commission will go through in considering the variance. When the commission considers whether to approve a variance, we've advised them to avoid asking questions that would elicit new information from the applicant. They can still ask questions, just not anything that would bring up new information. The reason for this is that the hearing on this issue has already been conducted by a hearing officer, so if the commission were to ask questions that brought up new information, that would, in effect, be reconducting parts of the hearing tonight, and that would violate the due process rights of parties who did not have noticed that a new hearing would be conducted. Instead, the commission will be relying on the evidence gathered by the hearing officer at the cannabis variance hearing to make their decision. They have also been able to consider comments that they have individually received from constituents. And although we've advised the commission against re-questioning the applicant or other witnesses, the commission can still discuss the variance application before coming to a conclusion. So, I don't want to restrict you from doing that, it's just asking new questions of the applicant. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
All right, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I come before you today about approval or denial of a variance request. Benjamin and Marlene Nunes, co-owners of Cannabis Club LLC, submitted a variance application to Community Development Department on August 7th, 2025, seeking a variance from Section 3A of Ordinance Number 120, which is the minimum separation distance from a residence requirement. Cannabis Club proposes utilizing an existing structure at 5641 Bloomfield Highway, Farmington, New Mexico, to operate a retail cannabis dispensary. The proposed facility was approved for cannabis variance for the purposes of manufacturing on April 16th, 2024. The facility is within 300 feet of three residences. Of those residences, only one is within 50 feet of the proposed retail structure. The proposed retail structure is accessed off of Bloomfield Highway and does not have access to the neighborhood to the south, separated from the closest residential structure by a privacy fence and trees on the property line. The applicant is seeking a variance for the life of the business at this location. San Juan County Community Development Director, Michelle Tributillan, determined in staff comments that the variance would not be contrary to the intent of San Juan County Ordinance 120. Staff recommends approval based on there being no objection from the impacted residents, the previously approved cannabis variance, the historical use of the structure as a VFW club liquor establishment, and the access of the cannabis business not impacting the residential community. A public hearing was held before Hearing Officer T. Ryan Lane on September 3rd, 2025. The requested variance was not opposed in writing or in person prior to or during the hearing. No residents were present at the hearing. Hearing Officer Lane recommends that the variance be granted based on the hearing findings as follows: that the granting of the variance would not be contrary to the intent of San Juan County Ordinance 120; that the structure was previously approved for a manufacturing variance; the previous use of the property as a liquor establishment; access to the proposed cannabis dispensary being solely off of Bloomfield Highway and not impacting the residential neighborhood; and the lack of purchase from the three residential properties within the 300-foot variance request. I stand for questions.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Do I have any comments or questions?
Ma'am.
Okay. All right. So, at this point, then, we'll go ahead and I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the application for variance from San Juan County Cannabis Ordinance Number 120 for Cannabis Club LLC.
Second. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have consideration of Resolution Number 252622, acceptance of NMDOT Transportation Project Fund Grant Funding for Bridge 8113 Rehabilitation. Mr. Perrell?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners, I hope this is good news. So, this past spring, we'd applied for funding through New Mexico DOT's Transportation Project Fund. We received notice a couple of weeks ago that we were indeed awarded funding for our project, which is a rehabilitation project on Bridge 8113, more commonly known as the APS Bridge, which crosses the San Juan River on Road 6675, and then provides a connection to Upper Portland on the south side of San Juan. The award's for $1.21 million. Just for information, that project is fully designed. We had designed this project specifically with the intent of applying for TPF funds to fund its construction. So, immediately upon receipt of the grant, we'll be ready to advertise the project for bid, and I'm optimistic that we'll have it under construction next summer. Just some history on TPF and what a great program it's been for San Juan County. I just added up, the program was conceived six years ago. Since that time, we've been the lucky recipient of five awards totaling $7.3 million across five separate projects. So, as you interact with legislatures, I would certainly appreciate it if you would share our gratitude on what a great program it's been for us here locally. So, to execute that grant, we do need a resolution that commits us to the 5% associated match, which in this case is $60,500. As I like to say, anytime we can buy a dollar for a nickel, it's a great deal. So, with that, I would stand for any questions and request your consideration of Resolution 252622.
Thank you, and thank you for getting that done. So, that's pretty significant. Do I have any comments or questions for Mr. Perrell? All right, not hearing any. Do I have a motion?
In consideration of Resolution Number 252622, I move that we accept that resolution, Mexico DOT Transportation Project Fund.
Okay. For Bridge 8113 rehab?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Number four, this is by Mr. Joe Sawyer, consideration of Resolution Number 252621, report on inspection of the detention center.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you know, Section 33-3-4 requires the governing body of the county to conduct an annual site visit to inspect the overall conditions at the adult detention center and to present an inspection report at a regular meeting. And I'm happy to report that all five of you Commissioners have toured the adult detention center and have reported that all appear to be in good order. And so, we'll be able to submit that, or to, hopefully, you'll approve this resolution, accepting those results.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer, for that report, and good job, Commissioners. So, do I have a motion on this?
Madam Chair, motion to approve Resolution Number 252621, the report on the inspection of the detention center.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a first and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll move on to our county manager.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How are you all?
Good.
Good. Well, we've got a lot of staff updates somewhere till last meeting for you.
Okay.
But I've got a couple as well. And I thought I'd start off first with extending our condolences and deepest sympathies to the Sullivan family. As, you know, former county commissioner Michael Sullivan passed away on September 5th. I know all of you knew him, a couple of you served with him on this commission, and I just want to keep their family and our thoughts and prayers. And of course, the funeral will be this Friday at 10:00 a.m. at the Jesus Christ Church of Latter Day Saints, and actually, Commissioner McDaniel was asked by the family to officiate
Okay.
the funeral. So, I just want to make sure you're aware of that, and more importantly, you know, Mike, as you all know, was a very caring individual who wanted to see the best for San Juan County. He'd served two terms, was very involved in the ag portion of our economy here, and he just was really committed to seeing, you know, brighter future for San Juan County, and just wanted to make sure that, you know, we recognized him tonight.
Thank you for that, Mr. Stark, and having served with him. And Commissioner Totacini, both of us served with him, and he definitely was very instrumental in what he did in his district. So, thank you for remembering him.
You bet. I just wanted to follow up. Last meeting, I had mentioned to you that we were in the process of applying for the SB3 Behavioral Health Grant, Planning Grant, and we were in coordination with Northwest New Mexico Cog, as well as McKinley County, who is our partner in this judicial district. And I believe we were the first entity and first district to submit on that grant. So, I just wanted to make sure you were aware that that opportunity has been submitted on already, and I believe we were the first in the state to get that in.
Thank you for doing that.
And it just goes, kind of segues relative to just, you know, and I appreciate Mr. Perrell and the numerous grants that we've received through TPF. As you know, we're all committed here countywide to trying to bring in as many dollars as we can, which is evidenced by the good work here by our staff, and of course, how that's really helped to supplement our budget and a lot of capital. really helped to supplement our budget and a lot of capital, good capital projects here.
And with that said, what was the percentage that we saw on the amount that we get from all the grants and everything, percentage for our budget? It was a significant, was it 41% or?
Yeah, $49 million of current grants under management. I don't know if that's captured a grant agreement we just received today for $7 million for the Crisis Triad Center.
Okay.
So I'm sure Ms. Martin, that number's gone up significantly, and I think the percentage accordingly. She'll be bringing that recognition of grant revenue to you next budget adjustment. But it's our second highest form of revenue here. So actually, gross receipts tax is number one, grants number two, and then property tax, three.
That's significant.
It is. It is. It's our commitment to help offset ultimately costs to citizens at large, and what it results in is what you saw tonight, property tax reduction.
That's right.
So those efforts really do make a difference, and I just want to extend kudos to our entire staff because it's a team effort to bring these dollars in, and it really does help, you know, in total, both financially as well as operationally.
That's right. Thank you.
We also are participating, and we have on an annual basis, Public Works is assisting with National Public Lands Cleanup Day is coming up. You should have a flyer in your packet Saturday, September 27th, at the Truca-Rosea Day Use Area. It's a BLM day use area over by Navajo Dam off of County Road 4275.
Okay.
And so this is a little different than in years past. We used to have a couple of different areas by which there were cleanup projects, but BLM wanted to focus on one specific area. And then actually do more than just cleanup, actually have a lunch that's associated with it and then interpretive walk, so make it more of an outing than necessarily a day of hard labor. There's still some hard labor, but for a couple hours.
What is in that area? Are there houses or is it off-road?
No, this is a BLM day use area adjacent to the San Juan River.
Oh, okay.
That's an area apparently they've needed some attention on. So that's this year's project, and I wanted to make you aware of that. As you know, one of our strategic initiatives is to make us shine, and so this is a way by which we participate in that. In addition to some upcoming events, our annual Household Hazardous Waste Day is coming up in October, and that's scheduled for October 11th here in our parking lot. And that's a semi-annual event that the emergency management team puts on, Mr. Mestes and team, and that's a way by which folks can get rid of hazardous waste. Of course, Farmington and Aztec residents, always a reminder that they have the ability to do that via the contract with Waste Management. And it's actually a call to the 800 number, and then the pickup is actually at your curb. So that's by contract with those two cities, and the citizens within those respective cities pay for that service. But for those that live in Bloomfield, Kirtland, Navajo Nation, they can come here on that day and take advantage of the Household Hazardous Waste Day. In addition, we'll have Dumpster Days. We're partly funded by a grant again. October 18th and 19th are transfer stations. That allows for free dumping at the transfer stations that are normally open on Saturday and Sunday. So just another way that we look to help clean up the county. I know Mr. Perrell will be working on coordinating our annual cleanup effort, highway cleanup effort with NMDOT, and that's something that we try to do every year, usually right before Thanksgiving. It seems to always time out with the senior center Thanksgiving dinner that we have over at the Lower Valley Senior Center, so we can go clean up some trash and then go help serve some seniors Thanksgiving dinner. We'll see if that times out that way again this year, but it hasn't in years past. And last but not least, the legislative folks in Santa Fe called to action by the governor via special session, October 1st and 2nd. Right now, what we're hearing and has been published by the governor's office, who controls the agenda, is that this will specifically be focused on trying to fix some federal funding gaps, that there wouldn't be anything else considered outside of that relative to crime bills. There was some talk about some of the detention facilities that host ICE detainees, that may be subject of discussion for those three counties, which we're not one of those. But just want to make sure you're aware of that, we're keeping a close eye if there is an opportunity to fund road projects, knowing we have one that is unfinished business relative to the Pinyon Hills Extension Project. So if that opportunity presents itself, we will certainly be ready to act accordingly. So with that, I can stand for any questions you might have, and defer to the rest of our department head team.
Is that all posted on our county website too, all the things that you just talked about, the Dumpster Day and?
Yeah, Dumpster Day as well as Facebook. So we have it both on social media as well as our website, and Mr. Neely does a great job of keeping the public informed and engaged relative to that. So thank you.
Okay. Good deal. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stark. So now we'll go ahead, elected officials and department heads, if there's any reports.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I have two people to thank. I was scheduled to do the detention inspection, and my husband had a medical ordeal. And thank you, Mr. Webb, for accommodating me to come on a Saturday. And in a way, I guess it was good on a Saturday because later on, I want to thank Mike Mestes for telling me about the tornado watch in Aneth and Blanding and Motazuma area, because when I was driving back to Shiprock, on the other side of Hawback, there was snow, I guess there was hail, all on the ground. So in a lot of ways, I avoided all that. But I do thank both of you gentlemen for your accommodation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Mr. Totacini, well, you're very welcome, and I only wish that I could have been there that Saturday, had other plans already. But to everybody, I want to say thank you for caring enough to exceed the statutory obligation, and every one of you showed up to inspect the jail and tour the jail. I apologize for the blindfold you had to wear during the tour, but I assure you, everything was in place. So a couple of other things I'd like to talk about here, and one is last Wednesday on the 10th, we had our very first, thank you, Devin, open house at the Adult Detention Center. While the turnout wasn't quite as much as I had hoped for, we had about a dozen people show up. Two or three of those folks are family members of current officers that were interested to see what the facility looks like and where their loved ones are hanging out and making their money and spending honestly the majority of their time. So it was good, gave me an opportunity to express what we do there, why we do it, and some of my personal philosophies towards treatment of the detainee population, and that is hinged on dignity and respect. So it was good. What we did learn was, after my presentation and some Q and A, I think everybody except for one individual opted to take the tour. Well, after the tour, there was additional Q and A, and I think altogether, we probably spent over two hours first open house. So in an effort to respect everybody's time moving forward, we've planned our next one for November 5th, Devin? Okay. I'm starting to get things right. So we want to have people call in, and we will schedule the tour first. So and I'm thinking we look at maybe allowing up to 25, maybe 30 people come in. Hopefully, we get that many. If it's up to that much, we will just split up and do two simultaneous tours, we just start on each end of the facility. So anyhow, it was, I felt like it was a success. Didn't have quite the turnout I'd hoped for, but still very good. And lastly, I want to talk about a program that I'm kind of building on right now, and it basically stemmed from the IGNITE program, which I think, Madam Chair, may remember from 2023. Very good program. IGNITE stands for inmate growth naturally and intentionally through education. It was the brainchild of a sheriff.
Michigan.
Trying to remember Chris Sullivan? Swanson. Chris Swanson. Flint, Michigan, to be exact, Genesee County, and very good program. I actually went in March of '23 and observed the program in action and won a gradations. The hardship we've had on our end, the struggle I should say, is that due to COVID, we still are experiencing some staffing issues. So don't really have the staffing to do the IGNITE program. But after putting pen to paper and talking to some of my staff, a couple of lieutenants and a sergeant, and reaching out to one so far of our second chance employers here in San Juan County, that being Pasco, I expressed to their HR department that my vision is to track our adjudicated folks that have an out date, and when they get within a few weeks of being released, we would provide them with job listings from Pasco, and I'm going to hit up Riley Industrial as well, who are also second chance employers. But I want to present the job listings along with hard applications and the offer to assist the detainees in filling out the applications, and then submit these back to the HR departments of these respective employers. And if they care to, I want to make available times for them to come and interview these folks for jobs. And the reason I say that is if we're going to truly impact recidivism, we have to, I think, offer hope to some of these folks that are being released, because the sad reality is that 90, 90-plus percent of the people incarcerated aren't going to prison. They're all coming right back to our community, to our neighborhoods. So my hope is that this is just one step in impacting recidivism, and I like to imagine an individual or individuals being released from the Adult Detention Center, walking out of that place on a Thursday or Friday, knowing that they show up to Pasco or Riley on a Monday morning for $18, $20, $22 an hour job. If we can achieve that, then we give these individuals hope. So anyhow, that's what I've been working on.
Well, thank you. Thank you for doing that, because I know that our detention center, the length of stay there is a lot shorter than the prison, and being able to adapt that to what goes on at the detention center. Do they have the opportunity to kind of be directed towards if they don't have a GED? Do they have our opportunity to know where to go and what to do?
They, well, yes, but not everywhere. We can give them some instruction, and honestly, when they leave now, our reentry services specialist in the lobby has all this information. So and we can, I think we do have some information on our tablets if people wanted to start looking at the GED program.
Okay. Thank you. And one thing that I didn't want to forget about now that I see you is that I got to attend the CO graduation.
Yeah.
It was a couple of weeks ago, right? I don't remember the exact date, but you know, thank you for that invitation. I hope that our other commissioners get to experience that, because I think there were, trying to imagine around the table, there were seven graduates at that one, and then you said there was an upcoming class, another class coming in.
Nine. We started nine yesterday.
Nine. Okay. So it has happened. And what's exciting about that is the individual's part of our community. There was maybe a couple that had moved into our community, but they've taken this opportunity to be a part of the county, to work with the inmates. And what I liked is that what you said, and Officer Kilman, is that his last name?
Yes.
That oversees the program?
Kevin Kilman.
Just to remind them of the humanity that these individuals are, that they are going to come back out in our communities. You know, they messed up, but they want to treat them with respect, keeping them safe as well as our community safe when this is all going on. So it was an honor to see that, as well as their families that attended, and then a little reception afterwards.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Do we come on up? Ms. McGinn?
All right. Madam Chair and Commissioners, gosh, Danny, you're very tall. Yeah. As you all might know, last Wednesday was Suicide Prevention, World Suicide Prevention Day. Jackie in the HR department and myself provided a community vigil out at Bird Park when it was pouring, but thankfully, we all like squeezed under the gazebo, so it was fine. But this month is recovery month, so this is kind of, this discussion is in the air. And of course, there are many, many variables for, as to why somebody chooses to end their life, and it's hard to sort of isolate one variable and say this is why it happens, which is why I call it a somewhat preventable death, because that's what it is. And so it was suggested that maybe I read to you guys what I read at that vigil, what I'm going to be reading on another vigil on Thursday. Devin convinced me to go on the radio Thursday morning, so anyway. This actually is a reflection that came out of both my personal experience, but also just my professional experience over the years, mostly geared towards folks who have lost somebody. This is such a pervasive issue that everybody's connected, either first, second, or third degree, really. And it's sort of based upon what I was hearing and what people were thinking and that kind of stuff. So I will read it, don't worry. It's short.
Thank you.
So, "We gather here as a unique mixture of people and circumstances. Some of us struggle ourselves, a lot of us have lost a loved one due to mental illness, and all of us need hope. We're going to pause and take a brief moment to reflect on that big, powerful word and concept, love. And I'm going to tell you something that you rarely ever hear. Sometimes, love is not enough. We all have a love affair with love, convinced that, as the Beatles sang, 'Love is all we need.' We hear it at weddings, and we see it so nicely hung up in houses. Words from St. Paul are like, 'Love bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things.' And we believe that love will save us. We believe that if we just try hard enough, say the right words in the right way, that it will penetrate darkness, that it will make everything better. But sometimes, love is simply not enough. Sometimes, there are imbalances that happen, compromised systems that occur, painful histories that mar and scar, situations that produce irrational beliefs and irrational thoughts. And love cannot always penetrate that fortress. Sometimes, what we hear inside someone's head is not what is true. Sometimes, somehow, the words "I love you" get lost and translate it instead to "I am unlovable." Sometimes, love is not enough. Sometimes, the only way to fix a chemical imbalance is through chemistry. Sometimes, the love of friends and family is just not enough. Sometimes, the only way to heal comes from at the hands of skilled professionals, healers. And when we see the world through a black and white lens, when we understand everything rudimentarily as a failure of love, then crushing lies often will follow. And it may sound like, if I'd only done this or that, we should have done this or that. Surely, had we loved better, we would have saved the ones we lost. But maybe the problem is we stop too short with St. Paul, because further on down his litany of what love is, he says, we find that his point is not how powerful love is, but rather how persistent love is. It's not that love can fix everything, it's that love outlasts everything. Look at us today, remembering, memorializing, caring still about the ones we love who are no longer physically present with us. We are not fixing, we are persisting. So even when the sting of death is so profound, when we can only hear a false siren's call telling us we aren't worth anything, when the ones we care so deeply about cannot hold our care, love is there, outlasting it all, persisting, enduring, but not always fixing. There are practical, helpful, good resources available when we struggle, when we need some help. some help fixing. And in the name of love, I urge everybody to take advantage of them. For as St. Paul says, "Love bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, and endures all things." So.
That's beautiful, and that's one of my favorite passages.
Of course.
Thank you for that. And it's really at the crux of it all. And you know, a lot of people struggle. I have a family member that was struggling this week, and when you say persistence of love, you know, maybe it didn't fix it, but being persistent.
Right.
And just another opportunity that nothing happens. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have anything else to add to that? That was really beautiful.
Thanks, Megan.
Yeah, not for you, just.
Okay.
This one, next.
Okay. You want me to go sit down?
Oh, whatever. Whatever you're doing.
Megan, can we get a copy? Hey, Megan, can we get a copy of that? Can you share it with us or?
Sure. Yeah, I can email it to you guys, but here's this copy.
All right.
I didn't mean to rush it, Megan, I was just saying I had something.
Oh, no, that's good.
So you're doing it again on Thursday, another vigil?
Somebody who was at the vigil last week, her brother died of suicide, and so she asked for me to come and share that as well.
That's great, thank you very much, very touching. All right, well, thank you. Are there any other reports? Did you have something?
Now, if I could.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I don't, it's not really a report, but before we meet again, Mr. Stark will have had a birthday. So we'd like to wish him an upcoming happy birthday. And as they say in Navajo, insa iyi, it's a big one. I won't tell you how many candles, but happy birthday, come out to birthday.
Officially, be over the hill.
Then you're joining us.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you for that. All right, are there any other reports? Mr. Perrell.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I am sure you're as ready to stop hearing these bridge updates as I am ready to stop giving them to you.
No, we just want the final update.
Former Commissioner Sullivan, who loved a good bridge update.
Yep, he did.
I am happy to give you one today. So on our project on County Road 3000, great news since we last met two weeks ago. Foundations were placed despite the weather we had last week. Kudos to the contractor who spent a couple of late nights managing water through that area so concrete could be placed and then, and then given an opportunity to cure before any real water came through. Assembly of the arch started yesterday. As of this afternoon, is about half done. So maybe some credibility to my statement that it's going to go fast, just, just please trust me. That being said, there's still a fair amount of work ahead. So the three week look ahead for that project is completion of the assembly of the arch and then assembly of the wing walls. The wing wall assembly is a little bit more complicated than the arch itself, so I expect that to extend beyond the next three weeks we're looking at. On 3500, we weren't so lucky with the weather. We got a really big storm event in the watershed that contributes to the Flora Vista Royal. Last Thursday evening, about a seven foot wall of water came through that construction zone. Didn't lose any work per se in that there was no form work on the ground awaiting concrete, but did lose whatever progress that was made in the prior week getting ready to assemble that form work. So again, the schedule for that project for this week looks like they have cleaned up after that weather event. Schedule right now is to place concrete for that outfall slab this Friday. That will allow water to be diverted, at least semi-permanently into the structure. Should make it semi-weatherproof in all but the biggest runoff events. After that's placed, we'll start work on the northern wing walls, which is the last bit of concrete on the project. And the placement of those, I think, is at the end of the next three weeks. So that's, that's my report to you. I would take an opportunity, given the weather that we had over the weekend, did have crews out through the weekend. I know Commissioner Lanier and Commissioner Gonzalez, I shared with you our on-call system. Haven't used it much this year, we didn't have any snow last winter, and this was really the first weekend of rain that we saw. Just a reminder, as you interact with people in the community, Monday through Thursday, seven to five thirty PM, there's road issues, certainly contact our specific authorities directly. As it turns out, it often rains at four o'clock in the afternoon. On a Thursday, it's more often than not, same thing with snow. Best way to get, get folks immediate service is to use our, our non-emergency dispatch. So we have a standby crew each week, it changes, that are paid a stipend to be on call for that, that week that they're, they're on call. The number is three, three, four, six, six, two, two. Those folks are great, they know how to obtain the what, the where, the when, and the why, much more effective than contacting me directly. Not that I don't want to help, I just don't happen to drive a backhoe or a motor grader. I'm, I'm just an engineer. So to the degree that, that, you know, folks can be, because I think a lot of people know about it, it's just the reality. They know to call 911 when their house is on fire, they know to call 911 when they're being robbed. But if there's a road issue, they may be more inclined to reach out directly to you all or myself or Mr. Stark. And then we get stuck in a game of telephone trying to sort out the details. So just a reminder, if folks can be pushed in that direction, that is the fastest way we'll be able to get a response.
Three, three, four, six, six, two, two. Okay, all right. Well, thank you, and thank you for your persistence in this.
Here you are wanting to build another bridge.
I did go out there yesterday. The one on 3500, you know, they were finishing up the diversion middle part right there. That really looks good. I mean, that structure really looks good. And I, I did send Mike a picture of the assembly of the dome thing, they're moving it. I mean, it's, it's coming together, it's, it's looking good, it's good to see the progress.
Yeah, we were, we were stuck in a rut getting those foundations placed, but fortunately we're beyond that.
Mother nature didn't cooperate.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I had a question. I'd like to keep Five Mile Bridge in the limelight, Mr. Perrell. Could you give us an update if anything has happened on Five Mile Bridge?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner McDaniel, we've continued to look for funding opportunities. I think, as you know, we'd applied for federal grants, this was over a year ago now. It was through a Biden-era discretionary grant program that was specifically targeted for underserved communities. I think it was called the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Grant, which makes a lot of sense for a bridge that, that served a valuable connection for the folks that live there. We weren't successful in that grant application. I'll be perfectly honest with you, the current administration has not released its discretionary grant program for road and highway projects at this point in time. So we haven't had anything to apply for. As you know, it's a, it's a large and expensive project. I think our, our estimate for a replacement at the time was around eighteen million dollars. That's, that's generally of a size where that's not a capital improvement, we would fund locally unless, unless you were all to implement some bonds or the voters were. So we'll continue to look for discretionary grant opportunities as they become available to see if we can make a replacement project out there.
I was thinking it was around thirteen million, did it go to eighteen?
I always thought that estimate was low, Commissioner. And I think you're right, I think it was thirteen, five, plus engineering, plus rate of rate, plus environmental. My gut tells me it's an eighteen to twenty million dollar project. And that was why I asked for an application to store. Thirteen sounds a lot better than eighteen, I agree with you. In my experience, it's a shame to ask for thirteen million dollars when you end up needing eighteen, because that five million dollar gap is awful hard to close sometimes. So again, we'll continue looking, and maybe it's worthy to refresh that estimate, just to see how the construction environment has changed. The last time we did that was kind of the, I want to say the peak post-COVID inflation times. I've seen construction projects and materials be relatively flat. As you know, most steel is domestically produced. Under the federal government, all the plastics we buy for projects need to be domestically produced, as do nonferrous metals. So that somewhat insulated at least federally funded construction projects from tariff implications. But again, having been, I think, three years now since that estimate, estimate was last done, it probably is worthy of a, of a refresh. So thanks for that reminder, for sure.
If you could, yeah, and I encourage you to keep on trying, I know you all are trying, so thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, Commissioner McDaniel, actually, Mr. Perrell applied twice for that grant, we were turned down twice.
Yeah, I know you're trying. Thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, and one more thing I wanted to ask, Megan, what was the, what's the national anti-suicide hotline number? Is it eight?
I mean, nine eight eight is the crisis.
That's what I'm thinking of. Yeah, okay, that's what I was trying to remember, nine eight eight, thank you. All right. And then, do we have any other reports?
Madam Chair.
Good afternoon.
Commissioner. We are here today to recognize a group of people that came out.
You want a picture of it?
Came out this last weekend to help beautify a much-needed show ring for our pig barn. Nine eleven Days of Service came out last weekend, and they did a great job. We had over twenty gallons of paint used on the show ring.
Wow.
About twenty, twenty-five volunteers come out for, you know, the morning of Saturday. Larry had approached us before the fair and asked if we had any projects to help with it. We just wanted to throw out their gratitude and thank them and appreciate their time and their due diligence to make sure it looks great for other kids to come and use it in the fair and facilities. So thank you, we appreciate you guys. We've got some members of the basketball team, right? Here to, you know, stand for what they did for us and.
Would you introduce them, their names, please?
What, Larry?
Derek Harveyo, Jonathan Tracy, and Xander Grego, they're seniors, four years in our program, and just represent, we had over thirty boys do over two hundred hours of community service from our basketball team.
Wow.
It's just his fault, and so this was part of that. Yeah, that's one thing the county for allowing us to do.
Well, thank you very much, that looks beautiful.
That's pretty nice.
Yeah, it looks really nice. So, and so what was Sheriff's Office was involved?
Oh, no, Mr. Judy works for us at the Sheriff's Office.
Oh, okay, okay, I get it, okay.
I work for the county, I'm part of the nine eleven Day of Service.
Okay, and you're also a basketball cup? For Farmington High?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're seniors at Farmington High? Okay, well, thank you very much for doing that, taking time on a Saturday, correct? That's when the nine eleven Day of Service was, so that, that means a lot. That's, that'll really look great for this upcoming, next year, so appreciate your time. So if everybody will just help me, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you for bringing them here. All right, Mr. Mestas. Haven't seen you for a while up here.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Just a final reminder of our full-scale drill tomorrow. It kicks off at eight o'clock at the detention center. I would love to have you at seven o'clock for our briefing and come and have coffee and have a briefing with us at the command trailer and view the SWAT team, the bomb team, the fire department, law enforcement, and their day of glory. And it started off with our online security seminar, which you all attended, and it'll come to fruition tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Hope to see you there.
Thank you very much for that report. All right. Mr. Neely.
I'll be quick, I know we all want to go home, or at least I do. Wanted to tell you that we're very excited to be listed as a qualifying facility. Backlot up near La Plata has been listed with the State Film Office as a qualifying facility, and now productions that are using the San Juan County backlot are eligible for up to forty percent tax rebate on the production that they're doing while they're in that space and using New Mexico vendors, so that's very cool. Also, as the film manager for the county, I wanted to tell you that San Juan County was the proud sponsor, as well as Commissioner Tobacini of the Four Corners Film Festival this last weekend. We had about a hundred and twenty students come to our showings on Friday and another eighty or so that bought tickets to the film festival, so we'll call that a rousing success. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
And they were from all over the county, the students?
Yeah, we had students from Farmington High, PV Aztec, and Navajo Prep.
Okay.
We've extended the invitation to all of the local high schools, and those are the ones with the film program, so they kind of prioritize coming to the film festival a little bit more highly than others without a film program.
Right, okay, thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
All right. Okay, any other reports? Okay, so now.
I have one comment.
Oh, do you have?
All right. I want to thank Steve and Michelle for joining us for Leadership San Juan Weekend up at Cascade Village and for all the services that they provided and giving of their time and their weekend. It was a long, fun weekend, but thank you.
So then next on our agenda, I go to the comments and input from the general public, and comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and on subjects the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. So if you'll come down to the podium and identify yourself and give us your comments. All right, I don't see any wrestling in the crowd, so, all right, thank you. Then now we'll go ahead and I'll have a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we move into the closed executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property, specifically land adjacent to McGee Park.
Second.
But first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Puzzled, hearing none, motion carries, thank you. Thank you.
Turn back on?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, I move that we go out of closed session and back into open session.
Second.
One second.
Yeah, my first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pause, very none.
All right, we'll go ahead and return.
Well, we need to read the statement first.
So we have returned from the closed session, the matters discussed in the closed session were limited to those specified in the motion for closure.
Okay, return.
Return.